Hello and welcome to this evening's regular city council meeting on September 2nd, 2025. Called the meeting to order and I would like to invite Pastor David Anderson from B Community Church for our invocation, followed by Vice Mayor Wade giving us our pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you're able.
Good evening. There it is. We honor your mayor, vice mayor, and all those on the city council. You know, one of the things that I was contemplating is the Bible instructs us to love one another. It actually tells us to love our neighbors and in the context of the Bible, neighbor refers to everybody. And so as we pray tonight, my thoughts are turned to each one of the citizens of Maricopa as we love, respect, and treat each other as neighbors and not be so focused on differences, but that we focus on the fact that we have more similarities than differences. Let us pray. Father, we pause to reverence and honor your name. For you are God and God alone. We thank you for this moment to honor you at the beginning of the city council meeting. As we begin our business for the evening, we pray that you would lead in God our leaders. Father, give them ideas and give them thoughts, Father God, to lead your people. And we pray, Father God, that the citizens of this city, Father God, have receptive and cooperative mindsets, that we would come together to work together, Father God. I thank you for the peace and the joy, the love and the smiles in our city. We thank you, Father, for continuing to bless us and keep us in your care. For this meeting tonight, Father God, I thank you that all that needs to be accomplished will be. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you Pastor Anderson and Vice Mayor Wade. That'll take us to roll call. Vanessa, please.
Councilmember Gettle.
President.
Councilmember Norm.
President.
Councilmember Learman.
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you Vanessa. And that takes us to proclamations, acknowledgements, awards, and presentations of which tonight we have none. So that'll move us to the report from the mayor. Council, anything, any items you'd like to share? Yes, Councilmember Marsh?
On August 19th through 22nd, most of us on council attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference in Scottsdale. We met with our lobbyists there and our intergov director Katie Proctor kept all of us on point and focused throughout the whole conference. There were some amazing topics, a lot to put together, and I was very excited to participate in all the sessions there. It was amazing. On August 25th, I met with the lead auditor who's now auditing the city's books and finances, looking for things like financial hanky panky. She was very smart and I feel that we'll get a good fair audit. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, anyone else like to share any information? I know Vice Mayor would like to. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, it piggybacks on what Councilmember Marsh was saying about the conference. We took a group of students from here, as student council, to the conference and they enjoyed it very much. They, we had a couple that had been there previously and they honored us by carrying our flag when we had the parade of stars, or parade of flags rather, and all the cities were acknowledged and recognized. So just wanted to thank them for having the vision to come along. I don't know if it's that hard to get out, keep, get out of class for a day, but certainly the young people got something out of it by being there. And I want to thank our council members as well for sharing ideas with them, giving them their props when they needed it, being a mom when it was necessary. And I think it was a really good day for the, for the young people. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Councilmember Manfredi.
Thank you. The League, the League event is a fun event, but it's also a work event, so it's fun working. We actually met with Senator Shope there, which is really fun. We got to talk to him about what's going on, how the next legislative session is going to happen, and a lot of other stuff. And having him as our senator is a good thing. So we were chatting about that. We were talking about, not only that, but Mayor gave him a little cup celebrating the 347 and he was so happy. It's embroidered, not embroidered, what's it called? Screen printed. It says 347 on it. It was really fun. And he was so happy. He's like, I'm gonna put it on my shelf as a trophy. And I said, well, whoa, as long as the funding stays in place. If not, we're coming and taking it off your shelf, just so you know. So that was pretty fun. The League, the League meeting is always a good time. You know, then I had a Central Arizona Governments meeting and an RTAC meeting, that's Rural Transportation Advisory Committee. And when it was my chance to talk during one of those meetings, I said, I'd like to talk a little bit about, and people are like, yeah, the 347. I'm like, no, 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 no. There's some other stuff I need. And I started talking about the green, green, green road, green road overpass that we're looking at, of course, seed farm road, and other things that, you know, I need from the transportation folks at the state. And then this, the other day, it was last week, I believe it was Thursday, I held a town hall here in this room and I was kind of disappointed. Only about five, maybe 10 people in total showed up. The mayor was one of them. And that's disappointing because I try and, I try and be the only per, the person who knows everything. And it's impossible next to the mayor, right? But she was there and she was great because she was talking to you a little bit. But we had a pretty cool town hall and I like to do them because what it does is it gives anybody the opportunity to come here, sit down, and just have a conversation. But it was really cool though that there was not that many people. So although it was disappointing, it was cool in that we were able to sit together and just chat without having more of a structure to it. When you have too many people, not everybody gets asked their question. But when you have so few people, we spent two full hours talking about a lot of the cool subjects that people talk about. And what was funny is most of the time, the 347 was not mentioned. I don't think it was until
Not once.
And 90 minutes in, and she mentioned it. So it was fun. And I plan to do those more and more. And I'd like other council members to join me in them because they're fun, they're exciting to do, and it gives the people the opportunity to just chat. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two events that are on my calendar that I wanted to invite our public to attend. Both have to do with our aging. As we get a little older, we need a few extra supports and resources, don't we? So first up, I'd like to invite us, the challenge that sometimes we overlook, the opportunity that sometimes we overlook, is the support that's behind caregivers. As we, as we struggle to help care for our aging parents, for example, a lot of that, we hate to use that word burden, because it's not really that burden, but it takes a lot from that individual, from that family to support that loved one through that aging process. And so here in Maricopa, through a generous donation with Global Water and a few other individuals, Mary Grace being one of the primary ones here, the Central Arizona Aging has provided us our first caregiver memory cafe, which is a wonderful opportunity. It'll be a few hours on Friday, September the 12th, hosted at Global Water there in the conference room, where caregivers can bring their loved ones for a little bit of respite, some fellowshipping, some support with, with individuals who understand their situation, where they're at. And so that'll be at the Global Water Resources Conference Room. This will be our first meeting. We'll, hopefully, we'll continue this throughout the next year. We will have at least a monthly memory cafe. So the first one will be September 12th, 9:30 to 11:30 that morning. The second item that I'd like to bring attention to is the University of Arizona hosts an annual diabetes prevention program. And their first class will begin Wednesday, October 22nd at noon. The program lasts a full year. It's a bi-monthly or bi-weekly, so it's twice a month, online virtual classrooms of all kinds of amazing information to help you move along with your health. Space is limited, registration is required, and those interested individuals who qualify can reach out to marygonzalez@arizona.edu for more information. And it's also flyers, I believe, are posted here in our Maricopa Community Center as well, on both events. So Mayor, that's all I have for us today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gettle. Okay, so y'all may be wondering, is she tired of talking about 347? The answer is no, I probably never will be. But I have some pretty cool information that I wanted to share with you all. First of all, all three parties that we talked about last time in celebrating the fact that 347 got on the five-year plan, we had three parties to celebrate that. They all went off great. And I want to take this opportunity to thank our staff, because without our staff putting on those events, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to meet with several of our residents and communicate all the information we know about 347 at these events, as well as having a lot of fun. So thank you, staff. They were really well done and everyone had a lot of fun. Second thing is, as was mentioned, the Arizona League of Cities and was two weeks ago, and a lot of fun in regards to my intergov set me up with meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. But the fun part was, we got a lot of work done through those meetings, but walking the halls, at least a couple dozen, maybe up to three dozen people stopped me and our intergov Katie in our tracks, walking around the conference. And what do you think the question was?
How'd you do it?
How'd you do it? That was it. How'd you do it? To the point that one city actually said, can we sit down right now and you tell me exactly how you did it? And so I am almost talked out about 347. But I want the city to be proud of the fact that we really have set a model. They wanted to know about how we got 140,000 letters to our legislators. They wanted to know about our half-cent sales tax. They wanted to know about our open house sessions. So many things that we have that we can share as a perfect model. And so it's really well known now throughout the state and I am excited to always answer their questions. So that's it for me today. Now we'll turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have, I mentioned at the, I believe our last meeting, that we would have a Marvin Andrews Fellow or Jane Morris Scholar from Arizona State University joining us for the next couple of years. We're fortunate to have her in our presence tonight. And that's Natalia Lurum. So if you could just wave over there. There you go. There's Natalia. She is wonderful, a bright spark for us in our, in our community as we are striving to be more innovative, more efficient, and provide the best services to our taxpayers. And so we are grateful to partner with Natalia with Arizona State University and bringing a great graduate student into our community to, to learn, but also to teach us how to think outside of the box sometimes. And so excited to have her on board and just wanted to make the introduction. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, City Manager, and welcome. We appreciate you being here in the city of Maricopa and we know great things will happen. Thank you. All right, that'll take us to the call to the public. I'll read to you some of the procedures that are involved in the call to the public. The procedures to follow, if you address the council or council request that you express your ideas in three minutes or less, and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take legal action on any matters during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So this evening, I have two speaker cards. The first I'll call up is Teri Yoshi. Please come to the mic. And I don't know if the but, green button is turned on, but if you would make sure that it is, that'd be great.
Oh, that button. Okay.
Hi, my name is, my name is Teri Yoshi. And I live in the Lake subdivision here. And thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight. Is it, I don't know what's allowed here in this forum, but I'd like to interact with the people here a little bit, if that's permissible.
You really should address the council. That's pretty much the forum for how this works.
Okay, then the council, will the council be willing to raise their hand to questions? Yes or no?
We're not able to respond to your questions.
You can't respond either. Okay. Well, I've been doing some, I'm here because of the incident of the E. coli bacteria in our drinking water that, you know, found last week. And I'd like to make a request. And that request will come after I get done with explaining how I view it, from what I've gathered so far, from what Global Water has presented and what I found on the web. And I think some of you are probably, actually all of you should be aware, well, the council should be aware of the situation and fully aware. But last Tuesday, water sample was taken and it was found to be contaminated with E. coli, which is a level tier one incident. And that was found on the 27th, the next day. So on, I'm assuming on the 27th, they started chlorinating and flushing this system and they're, they're, or at least investigating. And on 29, 28th, they should have, by regulation, notified their customers that were affected. If you look at the map, sorry, I didn't include it, I didn't include it here. But the map is a rather large area and it's most many, I think, a majority of the residents of Maricopa. And we should all have been notified by the 28th, that's a 24-hour, by EPA and Arizona DEQ, by their regulations. I've been trying to find out who, I'm about to timer?
Mr. Yoshi, yes. We have three minutes that we allow for call to the public. However, I would like to refer you to Andrew Miller, who is sitting behind you, who is Global Water Operation Manager. Would you raise your hand, Andrew? And please give some of the, have a conversation with him and give him some of the questions and then he can certainly relay to us your additional comments. Would that be acceptable?
It doesn't, no, it's not. Sorry. I, I think I need to address this to the council.
Okay, but your three minutes is up and unfortunately I have to hold to that
I didn't know I had only three minutes. Sorry.
That's okay.
So I, can I make my request? I think the citizens here in this city deserve clean and safe water. And I think the city council is responsible for making sure that, that major infrastructure piece is there for us and to protect us. In, in light of that, I'm requesting a full investigation of what happened, why notifications didn't get sent out, because there were several days where people were exposed, they didn't know. We're drinking the water from the tap, we were giving it to our pets, brushing our teeth with it. We didn't know it.
Okay.
And so I'm asking for a full investigation and what action you're taking, what Global Water is taking, because they didn't meet the requirements and their obligations. And I think the city should be, city council should be very concerned about that. And I'm hoping you are, and I hope you'll take the appropriate action and report back to the citizens. Because I haven't heard anything from the city council about this incident. And it is a serious
Thank you, Mr. Yoshi. Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you very much. The next speaker card is Dr. John and May. The next speaker card is Dr. John and May.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is that time of year again.
Eighteenth year.
Kids' Day Maricopa. For everyone who doesn't know, because there are new people coming into Maricopa all the time, Kids' Day is health, safety, environmental awareness for kids. We have 100 activities. The event is free. It, free food, free drinks, free toys. We give away bicycles and things. And even some of our council have given some things.
And support. Thank you so much.
Henry Wade. So, we just wanted to let everyone know about the event. It's at Maricopa Wells Middle School. It's from 10:00 to 4:00 on September 20th. It's a Saturday.
And I just want to share some amazing programs that we have here in Maricopa that a lot of families may not know about. The 4-H Club. We have little goats and bunnies and I mean, it's just adorable. We have Electrical District 3, the teachers about electric safety. Global Water, teaching about water conservation. We also have the amazing CERT program. It's home safety and community. We also have the fire safety with our amazing fire department with the big giant fire trucks the kids enjoy so much and so many other programs. Moki Bear will be visiting us. It'll be his 81st birthday.
Big Red also, from the Cardinals.
I'm an Arizona native, so I'm a big Cardinals fan. We also have the Maricopa Police Department that will be doing bicycle safety in combination with the Phoenix Children's Hospital. We have helmet safety and a little bicycle obstacle course. We're also working with the now warrior, Ninja Warriors out of Chandler that'll be visiting Kids' Day. The Pinellas County Sheriff's Office will have our helicopter again this year and the Humvee with our search and rescue division. It's so exciting for the kids.
We have singing, dancing, karate, all sorts of demonstrations, yes.
And then, before we beep, we want to share one other. The weekend after that, on Saturday, September 27th, we have the Third Annual Maricopa Police Foundation Golf Tournament at the Duke. So, we'd love you to dust off those clubs and come join us for an amazing, it supports our cadet program. We also have the Canines that are at Kids' Day. We, thanks for the, the event itself. We now have two Canines. We have Rico and we have Karma.
Yeah, and we're looking for golfers. We're looking for sponsors. If anybody wants to sponsor Kids' Day as well, still opportunities to do that.
It's never too late. We'll take it, even the day of. Come join us. You know, anything that can help, any type of resource programs, any, anyone that you know that can help children and their families, please join us. You can reach out to us at kidstdaymaricopa@yahoo or Dr. John and May. I'm, thank you for your time and we made the three minutes.
Barely, one second.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
There goes the beep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, would anyone else like to approach the podium? Please, thank you. Just state your name when you get there.
Good evening. My name is Ocean Kent. I'm with Ocean Industries. And one of our goals is to make sure we build bridges in our community. My community is Maricopa. I've been here about three years and I'm really excited about what I see happening, especially 347. We, on November 15th, Ocean Industries is hosting a cancer walk. It's called Boots on the Ground, Ten Toes Down Cancer Walk. We have the honor of having, Simon Med will be giving free breast exams. Cancer Care will be giving prostate cancer. Three out of 10 men die of prostate cancer just because they won't get tested. And also, I wanted to thank the city council, council member Amber Learman has actually sponsored our event. Mr. Geto, council member Geto, I always get your name wrong. Eric Geto, got it. He's also allowed us to touch, to touch with their committees, to share what's happening. Right now, we have some amazing sponsors, the UPS Store, Nectar, Fries, Silk Press Express. So, the community is standing in the gap for those that don't have a voice or those that need a voice. We're hoping that we still need some sponsorships as far as T-shirts and things for the event. We're looking for people to show up, walk, for those that have passed and gained their wings, for those that are still surviving, for the caregivers, we just talked about that, and for those of the families that really go through that with them. So, again, November 15th, Copper Sky, we just secured Copper Sky. We'll be walking around the lake from 1:00 a.m. to, I'm sorry, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There'll be food trucks. Please, show up and show your community that we care about those that have had cancer and those that are fighting cancer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else, oh, I see another person coming forward. Please state your name.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Rich Vidello, Pinellas County Supervisor. I also attended the, the League of Cities in Towns last, two weeks ago and I had a very interesting conversation with six people who are, are state representatives. And that conversation was on planning and zoning. And I have to tell you, they're coming after your planning and zoning department. They want to take away the capability of you deciding what is built in your city and cities throughout the state, not just here in Maricopa. And that's no bueno. I am not for that. I will not allow it to happen. I will work hard with all the cities, whether it's in Pinellas County or Maricopa County, to make sure that we stop this. They already have started with casitas in our neighborhoods. They're allowing to have casitas built in neighborhoods without your authority. Next is going to be apartments, houses, anything they want to build right in our backyard. And I got to tell you something, after they go after the cities, who are they going to come after next? They're going to come after the counties. And we got to make sure we all stick together for this and make sure any one of our state representatives who want to, want to vote yes for this, we let them know, citizens too, please, I know I can't address you, but I'm just letting you know, we need to do the same thing we did for the 347 to get thousands of emails to our state representatives, state, house, staff members. They're going to push this on us next year. It failed last year, but it's getting closer every year. And like I said, I didn't have a discussion. I had an argument with six on one and I asked them to bring more on because they were running out of air because I was just going and going and going. It was a good hour, argument. It wasn't a discussion. It was an argument. And I told them, I even asked them, do you know about the city of Maricopa? And they said, yeah. Said, how many people in the city of Maricopa? No idea. I asked them about the 347 problems. Two of them didn't even know what the 347 was. And you want to be able to tell our planning and zoning departments in all these cities how to build if you don't even know what our state highways are? So, anyway, I just want to ask for your guys' support for this and our residents to make sure that they don't do this to us. And Nancy, Mayor, sorry, I will be talking with you and the council members about this and same with the other supervisors, whether it's Pinellas County, all 15 counties. I'm going to get together with them and make sure, stay out of our business. The state doesn't want the federal in their business. We don't want the state in our business. Thank you very much and I hope for your support.
Thank you. Supervisor Vidello, this has been going on for more than just last year. We've been fighting this for two or three years. I welcome the counties getting involved and spread the word, please. And thank you for speaking because we need all residents to speak out against it, 100%.
This, this will be a typical comment I make at pretty much every council meeting, wherever I go.
Thank you.
Okay?
Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, I will close the call to the public. That'll take us to the consent agenda items. Council, this evening, I have consent agenda item 7 dot 1 through 7 dot 7. Do you have any questions? I have no speaker cards. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? So moved by Councilmember Manfredi, seconded by Councilmember Marsh. One last opportunity for comments, questions. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So, that'll take us to regular agenda item 8 dot 1, which is an appointment. This evening, it is an appointment by Councilmember Geto for a vacancy on the Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee. Please, Councilmember Geto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, tonight, we have a vacancy on the Cultural Affairs and Arts Advisory Committee. We'd like to first of all, thank Ms. Peg Chapados for her term of service there on that committee. She's retired and has resigned her position there. And so, tonight, I'd like to nominate Mark Ellsworth, who is an amazing individual. Let me just read a little bit about his bona fide here. Mark Ellsworth is an award-winning theater director, production manager, and writer. He's lived in Maricopa for seven years now. He has a bachelor's and master's degree from ARU in theater arts. He's also the founder of Actors Youth Theater and has been serving the East, which has been serving the East Valley for over 23 years. He currently teaches advanced drama at Heritage Academy in Maricopa and is excited to bring more theater arts to the community. He has directed over 65 community, college, high school, and youth theater productions and has garnered more than 13 Arizoni theater awards. He's won multiple festival awards for writing and screenplays and in his spare time, I've been told, he is finishing his second full-length novel. So, the man's crazy and wonderful and so, we'd like to go ahead and nominate tonight Mr. Mark Ellsworth to fill that position on the committee. Are there any questions? And in fact, I've invited him here tonight. Mark, would you just stand up and wave, say hello?
I don't have any questions, but I thank you. Anytime the public is, gets involved and volunteers to serve, it's fantastic. Council, questions, concerns?
I'd like to make a motion then that we accept his nomination and approve that here tonight.
Motion made by Councilmember Geto, seconded by Councilmember Manfredi. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, that'll move us to item 8 dot 2, which we will start off with a presentation by Jennifer Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We bring to you tonight our bed tax policy to discuss and put before you for approval tonight. And really, what we're trying to accomplish with this policy is to outline how we're going to meet the strategic priorities that you've approved as well as how we're going to comply with state law as it, as it relates to bed tax policy. So, I'll walk you through a little background. We're going to look at what state statute says. We're going to look at what other cities like ours are doing and then we're going to go over the, the high-level highlights of the policy. So, if you have questions or anything, please don't, don't hesitate to ask any of those. So, first, these look really familiar to you because these are part of the strategic priorities that you approved back on May 6, 2025. And so, the two strategic priorities are the action items that this policy is really meant to address is strategic action item 4.4, which talks about investing in public art projects and experiences, as well as strategic action item 5.1, which looks at employing a sports and events tourism strategy. So, that's really what we're looking at here tonight. And I should mention too, this is a policy, like any other policy that you have. If you approve it or if you like it here tonight, that doesn't mean we can't change it. We can come right back here and if there's a change to it later on down the road, there's changes in what our priorities are or anything like that, this is a policy that we can always come back to and readdress and I think we will need to over the years because it's going to change in terms of how much we collect over the years in terms of, of bed tax. So, a little background, on June 1st, 2021, the city council passed an increase to the hotel motel additional tax from our regular 2% sales tax and increased that up to 5.5%. And so, with that increase, a portion of that increase must be spent on tourism. And so, we put the state statute, and I'm going to read through it just because I want to be really clear on what that, that looks like. But what the state statute says in terms of what a portion of that bed tax policy needs to be spent on for the expenditures for the promotion of tourism includes direct expenditures by the city or town to promote tourism, including but not limited to sporting events or cultural exhibits, contracts between the city or town and nonprofit organizations or associations for the promotion of tourism by the nonprofit organization or association, and expenditures by the city or town to develop, improve, or operate tourism-related attractions or facilities or to assist in the planning and promotion of such attractions and facilities. And so, what we did for, for this presentation to try to understand what other cities like ours are doing is, is we went and talked to some other cities. We did not talk to cities that have a spring training facility because those have some really different needs. And with the exception of one of these cities, we also didn't seek out cities that have a city charter because they may have a few different rules. So, that's a little bit of how we, we picked those cities. But this is the list that we came up with and I'll, I'll go through it pretty quickly here. But Fountain Hills spends their bed tax dollars for tourism on special events, advertising and marketing, fountain maintenance, that fountain is a big draw for tourists there. Queen Creek spends on the Mesa Gateway Airport Authority, economic development. Visit Queen Creek. Page spends on their bond for the aquatic center, marketing, and then familiarization tours. And so, that's when you bring travel agents or influencers out to your area to look at what's going on so, in the hopes that they bring more people for tourism there. Gilbert spends theirs on special events, marketing campaigns, CIP projects with Tourism Draw, Economic Development and Tourism Team. So, Arita spends theirs on economic development, Prescott Valley, Special Events, Chamber of Commerce funding, and Casa Grande Destination Marketing Agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. So, gives you a little background of what, what others are doing. So, high level, you guys have the actual policy in your packet tonight, but high level, what we're looking at doing here is designating all of that 5.5% in that hotel motel additional tax to arts and tourism initiatives. So, the statutory requirement does not require that all of that 5.5% goes towards this, but with the strategic priorities as they are and the amount that we draw down through this, our recommendation is that we take that, all those dollars that come in from visitors and reinvest them in getting more visitors to our community. Another piece of the policy is that the annual budget for the hotel motel additional tax revenue is recommended to council during the annual budget process and that's based on collections and goals, so it'll be coming back to you every year. This year, it's already approved in this current fiscal year's budget and the approval does adhere to this policy already. But that's already been approved for this year. And any unused funds budgeted for expenditure in the current year will carry forward to other fiscal years, so it always stays in that, that same bucket. And again, that is until you recommend a change to it, so that, that's where we're at today. And then, the way the allocation works, and this is in your policy as well, is that 91% of the receipts will go for funding for event tourism initiatives, including current and future events. What's authorized today is for Wild West Music Fest and then that 9% of receipts go to funding for the arts grant program, which again, was budgeted and allocated for this current fiscal year. Lots can change over the years, you know, if we get another hotel or three hotels, that means we have a lot more revenue coming in from the bed tax and so, that could mean we want to invest in infrastructure like some of those other cities I listed off are doing. And so, when you think of sports tourism, maybe we want to build fields or do something like that down the road. But, but today, this is based on what our strategic priorities are. This is where we felt like it, it made sense. But with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Council, yes, Councilmember Marsh.
How, how do bed and breakfast, short-term rentals fit into this taxation story?
They are a piece of it. So, they are a piece of the total amount.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Councilmember Nor.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer. This is great information and answers all of the questions that I had sent, so I appreciate that. I just, for the councils and staff, I think it's important for us to recognize all of the opportunities that are available under the bed tax. And I think that, I mean, I, I personally would like to see us either do like a survey or I don't know, some sort of question to the community about what they think we should do with the bed tax now that we know all of these options that exist. But if we can't do that, which I think we should, I would like to have like a strategic conversation about the future and the next five and 10 years about how we're going to strategically invest because this is a lot of money and I think there's a lot of opportunities and it's only going to increase, as Jennifer mentioned, and it's not all restricted. And so, right now, we're using all of it for the Wild, for the Wild West Music Fest and then 9% for the arts grants. And we only have to use 171,000 of it. But also, when you look at the list of things that other communities are using it for, you know, I just think it's worth a conversation about how do we want to... know, I just think it's worth a conversation about how do we want to strategically invest this money as the community grows, as we move forward, you know, what is the highest and best use for these dollars? So I, I think this is a great start to that conversation, you know, getting this information out, and, and really understanding what the bed tax is, and how it can be utilized, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nor. Yeah, I would agree in regards to, it was really entertaining for me to see what all the other cities use it for, there's a lot of commonality across the city, special events being a primary one of them, but in having this discussion during the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I had this conversation with many mayors and council members, and there were some interesting ideas, so just as we did in the futures planning for January of '25, we'll do it again in January of '26, and have a very robust conversation, I'm sure, on the bed tax, and see if there's any changes that the council wants to make to that process, and as you've indicated, we can change the policy anytime that we would like. I saw a couple other hands, Councilmember Marsh.
Yeah, I don't know if we're far enough along on the tourism story and strategy here, to add a section to the general plan update covering tourism strategy and allocation of funds, if not this year, 10 years from now, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, I can talk to our development services team about that.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Nor's request, I would be curious how we get the community and community organizations more actively engaged in the conversation, so that we can make sure that, because it's their money, and want to make sure that it's used in a way that benefits the community, benefits the individual organizations as well. So like for them being, like for them to be engaged as, as strongly as possible.
And we can absolutely look at some strategies for that, for futures planning.
Very good. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Vice Mayor Wade, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Marsh, any additional comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda, thank you all.